Here.
Councilmember Boeck.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Moss?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen?
Present.
And Mayor Anderson?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Well, thank you. The first item on the agenda is Proclaimations and Presentations. And we have invited our 28th and 29th District legislators here tonight for mid legislative session update. And it's my understanding that our contract lobbyist Brianna Murray is under the weather. And so as we queue up our available legislators, I see the floor to Mr. Caulfield with respect to our legislative agenda for this session. Mr. Caulfield?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all today on the Ides of March, if you will. So unfortunately, Ms. Murray is unable to make it this evening, so I'd just like to provide a brief introduction before turning it over to our state legislators from the 28th and 29th who were able to make it here this evening. And the purpose is for them to, you know, provide all of you kind of a mid-session report. We're a little bit halfway, a little bit over halfway through the session. Didn't want to let you know, as it relates to your key priorities, things are actually moving along quite nicely. Right at the top of the, right at the top of the list is the Economic Development Tool Tax Income Financing. And there is a bill, House Bill 1189, has actually passed out of the House and is over in the Senate. This is a bill that the city has been partnering with, with a broad coalition of cities and other entities across the state to hopefully push this across the finish line. As you know, this has been an endeavor that has been underway for a number of years. It would be truly beneficial not just to the city of Lakewood, but all cities and towns in Washington State. And really, it's just a key economic development tool, but also allows us to proactively implement our comprehensive plans as well. So I want to thank our state delegation from 28th and 29th for their support and their continued support of this bill as well. The Western State Hospital Community Partnership Program, our delegation has signed on and submitted a letter of support to the budget writers. If you recall, this is also included in the governor's budget proposal. We have several capital budget requests that are moving forward and are being sponsored by various members of our delegation. The first one is for LASSA Living Access Support Alliance Expansion, $500,000 for them to be able to expand their facilities. In addition, the city, we have two requests, one for Ward's Lake Park improvements as well as American Lake Park ADA improvements. And again, both of them have sponsorships from representatives within our delegation. And then lastly, you know, the city is requesting $250,000 from the state transportation budget or a future transportation revenue package to conduct that multimodal transportation study, which is, you know, a follow-up from that terrible accident and derailment that occurred back in December of 2017. Really, at the end of the day, the ability to secure that funding is, is really going to increase if the legislature, you know, identifies new revenue for transportation, just given the tightness of the state's budget, but particularly as it relates to its transportation funding. In addition, the city continues to be actively engaged across a number of fronts, whether that's SSMCP and working with AWC on a number of issues, whether it's, whether it's land use planning, growth management, police reform, infrastructure, the list, the list goes on. And then, of course, we continue work very closely with our legislators down, down in Olympia. And even though it is virtual, things are, are moving, seem to be moving, moving along quite, quite effectively and efficiently. So with that, Mayor, that's my report. And again, Ms. Murray does send her regards. And I'm sure you'll be seeing her, seeing her soon. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. And we have Representative Maria Levitt, who has joined us. And I'd like to give you an opportunity, Representative Levitt, to give us your take on the this strange and maybe one-of-a-kind legislative session.
Sure. And, and welcome and good evening, everyone. It's great to join you. And yes, so we are at day 64. I'm so almost, you know, more than halfway through and just 40-plus, you know, plus hours away from end of session. We've passed our House of Origin, so we're excited about that. And, and now started committee time again for hearings for bills that we're hearing from the Senate, since I'm in the House, and vice versa. And we'll spend most of our month of April on the floor. So even though we are in a virtual session and most of us are working from home or district offices, and we've gotten quite a bit done. And I think the important work that we've gotten done has helped small businesses, has helped in terms of rental assistance, helped our schools, helped our health departments with COVID-related relief and dollars. And we'll continue to do that. And focusing on childcare certainly is, is an issue as our, as our parents are challenged as they're working from home. I'm a mom with three kids at home, and I can tell you, it's not easy to navigate that series of work when you're trying to get things done, but then also I'm sure that your kids are learning in the way that they're intended to learn. And so we continue to focus on that. But again, House Bill 1095 passed and has been signed by the governor, which was a big relief for those small businesses who were trying to ensure that they didn't have to pay BNO tax on any PPP loans that they received or grants, and that was important. Senate Bill 5061 also, as many small businesses in our community know, that the unemployment insurance tax was a cliff that we couldn't afford to fall off of. And so that helps kind of do the stopgap for that and, and help our small businesses, but then also expands the opportunity for our workers and our stopgap workers to be able to receive extended benefits, which is very important. House Bill 1368 gave 250 million in our small business grant opportunities. And these are grants, not loans. If you talk to small businesses, I know you know all too well that small businesses don't want loans where they have to pay even a small amount of interest as interest. And it's, it's costs that they weren't expecting to absorb in addition to the unemployment insurance tax. And while the cliff was relieved, it's still an increase. It's still going to be an increase for our smallest businesses because smallest businesses pay the most. And so that is a bill that's very important to be able to get those dollars out. And again, our public health districts needed dollars to do COVID testing and COVID vaccination sites. And so we'll continue to focus on that. And then, and most importantly, I think in addition to our rental assistance programs, our landlord mitigation fund has been boosted and millions of dollars have been infused into that because our landlords need to pay their mortgages so that they can retain their housing stock. Because without their housing stock, then we won't have renters available to be able to choose safe neighborhoods for their, for themselves and for their families. So we're moving along at a pretty fast clip. But we've had more interest in terms of folks who have chosen to testify because they can just sign in. And even if they don't want to testify, they can just sign in pro or con in a way that's been a lot easier than times in past. So I think that's the silver lining, and I'm hoping that we'll continue to be able to do that even after our virtual session. So happy to answer questions. I think one bill of interest in particular to our cities, and I know AWC supports very much so, is the local flexibility, House Bill 1069, that provides our cities opportunities for local flexibility of how you use your dollars to be able to shore yourselves up. And so we are looking, we know the forecast is coming out. We also know that the federal dollars are about to flow in to our cities and counties and local jurisdictions. And so we're trying to assess kind of what that looks like for our budgets, but we're sensitive to our local jurisdictions and the needs that they have. And AWC has been a great partner, but we're looking at, at various different ways. And the cities have been coming in and asking for levy cap increases, for a cap, the 1% cap increase. And so we're taking a look at those, but also trying to balance that out with residents who are saying, we don't want to pay more property taxes. We don't want to pay more fees. We don't want to pay additional kinds of, you know, dollars on top of everything else that we're already, we can't afford to pay. So balancing the AWC and the city's requests for, for needs of being able to shore up local district needs, but then also, you know, respecting our residents who also have significant needs and are struggling in a way that we've never seen before is, is one of our challenges. So happy to answer questions.
Questions for Representative Levitt? But I would, I guess, while I'm waiting for hands to go up, have a couple. Has there been any discussion with respect to the American Rescue Plan? And how that money is going to be allocated? What, what role the legislature intends to take as opposed to just defaulting to the governor's office?
Yeah, you know, I know the budget team, particularly in the House, and I only speak for the House. I don't speak for the other chamber, as you know. But I think speaking for the House, they're taking a look at what that may mean for the budget. The challenge with those dollars that will go out to local jurisdictions and need, it's their one-time dollars. So you can't build ongoing programs on this infusion of dollars that will boost our economic recovery and help with rental assistance and landlord mitigation funds and, and shoring up, you know, public safety needs and, and infrastructure and all of those things, but they're one-time funds. And so they're not going to be ongoing. And so our budget team is trying to balance those dollars and what they may be able to offset in terms of budget requests, but then also recognize that those dollars are one-time and may go away. So to answer your question, Mayor, our budget team is looking at it in consultation with the governor's office, but then also in consultation with AWC, with the Washington Association of Counties, and with the various needs that are significant that are coming forward that we're trying to, to balance those. So we'll see what happens. But again, those dollars are tremendous and they're one-time. And so that's, that's been the balance.
Kind of a drill down on that one. You mentioned the, the cliff on LNI. It seems one possibility for one-time dollars is filling the hundreds of millions of dollars in deficit that that fund has rather than amortizing it out, putting it on the back of all businesses. Is that something the legislature is looking into?
It may. You know, I can certainly raise that with our, our Chair of the Appropriations on the House side. I know that we all are very concerned of the unemployment insurance tax on small businesses. Again, even a little bit of a raise for small businesses who can't afford already to pay their rents and their leases and the, you know, the, the dollars that they have for utilities and everything else that they normally would pay in addition to all of the COVID expenses, PPE cost dollars. And we all saw price gouging. And if we didn't see price gouging, we still had to pay for PPE that we've never imagined that we would have to budget for. And that costs dollars that you can anticipate. And so our small businesses are hurting in a myriad of ways and trying to figure out how to support them in those efforts, but also to shore up the smallest business. I'm not worried about the businesses who have 1,000-plus employees. We'll figure out how to help them. And they too are suffering, and I'm not suggesting that they're not, but the smaller businesses, the 500 or less, the 100 or less, the 25 or less, it's disproportionately impacted in unemployment insurance tax. And those are the folks who employ the bulk of our, our residents that, that live in Lakewood and live in our district and, you know, live in our communities. And those are the ones that we have to help, I think, and who need it the most.
Certainly true in Lakewood. I'd like to welcome Representative Brnowski. Thank you for joining us tonight. And of course, yeah, and my apologies for being a little bit late. There was a couple of other obligations that I had to attend to, but no, I appreciate you letting me in and giving me the opportunity to be here. So thanks. Well, glad that you could find the time. And like with Representative Levitt, we'd like to give you the floor to give us your take on the legislative session.
Well, yeah. So, you know, briefly, my experience has been that this legislative session has been unprecedented. It's been a session like no other. I mean, just like your council meetings where it is, it is a real challenge to conduct business online, especially when it comes to interacting with some constituents that perhaps have issues with access to technology, because we want to make sure that their voices are heard. And it is a real challenge to be able to provide those accommodations, but I think we're doing it relatively well. And then, you know, being new and, you know, taking it all in and, and, you know, just really learning how the process works in real time in a virtual session has been, has been a real challenge for me as a, as a freshman and certainly has been for, I think, all of my fellow legislators, regardless of how long they've had the privilege of serving. So, you know, there's a lot of different priorities that the, at least us in the House Caucus are working on and, and as a team over there. And I think we, we are doing a good job working, working with our partners in the Senate. But, you know, it's been unprecedented up until now, just the challenges that we've had to try to solve. I mean, I, you know, I briefly came in when we were talking about unemployment insurance. You know, the Department, the Department of Employment Security has a lot of work that needs to be done to not only make sure that, you know, I caught the questions in regards to business. You know, we need to make sure that they aren't hit with an extraordinary funding ask to rebound that, that unemployment insurance trust fund, but also we need to make sure that people and members of our community are taken care of when they're out looking for those unemployment benefits that they're absolutely, that they're absolutely should be getting. And so that's been, you know, kind of a focus of mine in one of the committees that I'm in, Labor and Workplace Standards, is to help the Employment Security Department provide a better customer service for the people that need it on the business side and on the worker side. And, and I don't, I want to make sure that that doesn't get overlooked, that there are approximately still 55,000 cases across the state of Washington that have not yet been adjudicated between the Employment Security Office and the person seeking the benefit. And, you know, there's a whole slew of different reasons why they could be, they could be in, in the works for getting their benefit. It could be something where they qualified for a federal benefit for not, or not a state benefit or vice versa. So that's why I'm working really closely with Senator Conway in the 29th, also represents our, our city, to try to find a really good balance that will make it to where we can get through the unemployment crisis on the employer end and the employment. And, and hopefully, if something like this comes up, the next economic disaster, and I'm not saying it's inevitable, but you know, our economy has its ebbs and flows, that unemployment insurance and the Employment Security Department is better able to handle a sudden shock to the workload because of the sheer volume number of requests. So anyway, and that's just one of the many other issues we're dealing with between unemployment insurance, COVID, COVID presumption for workers that are getting sick because they're at work. You know, we're working on, you know, and I know this is also a city priority, issues between law enforcement and the community to make interactions between the law enforcement and the community members, build safety for both parties. You know, we just are trying to figure out how the $1.9 trillion federal stimulus is going to affect state government. That will certainly affect the city of Lakewood as well. There's a lot of moving parts right now. And so that's why, you know, it's just as important now as it always has been to keep those avenues of communication open and make sure that we can provide the best service to, to the constituents that we share. So that's just a little bit of my, my experience there, Mr. Mayor.
You know, the, the other thing I'll mention is House Bill 1332 is a bill that would allow our small businesses to defer their property tax. So setting up with treasurers to have, it's, it's not a waiver of their property tax or their leases, but it's an opportunity to defer. And we're really hoping that that, it's over in the Senate, it got out of the House, that that continues to move and get passed by the governor. There were several early action bills. And we didn't talk about school waivers, you know, to help our graduating seniors be able to graduate. And I know that Clover Park is near and dear to your heart in Lakewood in the school district. But, you know, making sure that, that our small businesses and House Bill 1332 and other kind of deferral opportunities for small businesses, but then also our graduating seniors so that they can be able to graduate on time and, and get their full credit that they need or get the waivers that they need and able to be able to move on. Because COVID has hit families in a variety of ways, and it's been hard on many, on parents, on kids, and for behavioral health issues. And so trying to figure out, we're trying to hit COVID and the economic recovery angle from, from different perspectives and, and doing as much as we can in a very short period of time, but pretty have, pretty much having a laser focus on, on COVID and economic recovery. And then, of course, police accountability, which I know you all know well, being in Lakewood.
You mentioned 1320, I believe you said, on the, I might have got the number wrong, but on deferral of taxes for small businesses, which tax?
1332 property tax. So that bill, yeah, so it defers the 2021 property tax deferrals and gives them longer, or small businesses longer to pay those taxes than they ordinarily would have had. And so hopefully, and our county treasurers are expected to ramp that up and get that set up. But hopefully, the Senate sees the value of that program. And I know that, you know, cities and jurisdictions were a little concerned about that, you know, you might lose revenue. And, and my, my stance is cities and counties aren't going to lose revenue. It's deferred revenue, but it'll keep small businesses alive and to be able to thrive, which will keep jobs in place, which will keep communities able to then go out and shop and pay their taxes in different ways. So House Bill 1332 is kind of an important part of our COVID recovery, economic recovery package.
I, I, well, that, I'm sure that that will be welcomed by those that applies to most of the small businesses in Lakewood or tenants. And so those other relief packages are probably more vital to their survival. So, Mr. Branstadter?
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, Representative Levitt, Representative Brnowski. And you've, you've spoken to us about the, how we're working to avert the cliff in unemployment insurance for, for businesses to be able to do that. But can you speak a little bit to what's being done about the approaching cliff of the end of the eviction moratorium? You know, the eviction moratorium, as it was presented, didn't necessarily tell people that you'll never have to pay your, your rents going on, but, but it created cash flow problems for, for landlords. But that in Lakewood, we seem to be seeing already some landlords of single-family rentals divesting themselves of that property and taking the property out of the, the rental housing stock. But a lot of the multifamilies are just building up IOUs that, that their tenants owe them, and they're getting some of that back. But you can get a month or two from some programs, but you're not going to be able to get as people have now, some built up six or seven months of rent they haven't paid. And so there seems to be a cliff there for both the landlords as, as well as tenants when the moratorium ends. It can't be indefinite, but is there some thought of something that could be done, perhaps using some of these dollars that are going to come in from the federal government that are not really going to be passed through to local governments, but that the state could use to offset the moratorium impact?
Yeah, absolutely, Councilmember, and thank you for that question. You know, House Bill 1368 infused millions and multi-millions of dollars into a rental assistance and landlord mitigation fund that will do just that, administered by the Department of Commerce to get out to both renters and landlords to be able to pay those, those arrears. In addition, there were bills that were passed and dollars that we're looking at for both in terms of dispute resolution centers. We have a budget proviso for 17 million across the state, and some of that will flow into Pierce County. That takes a look at ensuring that our dispute resolution centers can focus on rental assistance and working with our landlords to be able to apply and help them apply for the rental assistance programs. As you know, Pierce County just expanded their dollars as well with theirs. But the House Bill 1368 used federal dollars to infuse into that program precisely for that purpose. In addition, House Bill 1277, if it gets across the finish line, and that's, that's adding $100 to the document recording fee. And the primary purpose of that fund will be for rental assistance and landlord mitigation funds to, to address the cliff that we know is happening, you know, potentially at the end of this month. You know, in theory, the, the eviction moratorium is lifted at the end of March. And what that will mean for renters when, you know, we've got a lot of renters at the 80% or below AMI. You know, significant amounts are below that 80% AMI and are struggling to try to pay that. And so we're not only looking at rental assistance dollars, but we're looking at utility assistance dollars as well, because it's one thing you can pay your rent, but if you can't keep your water on or you can't pay your utility bills, that's a challenge. And so how do we address paying utility bills, but then also helping our municipal utility companies in particular to be able to shore up so that the rates don't get increased across the board because they're two in arrears? And so we're looking at a variety of different options through 1368, 1277, and others to address just that. And some of that will, we're looking to get back to the mayor's question earlier. You know, how, how much of those dollars we can use to address the rental assistance cliff? I know we talked about the unemployment insurance cliff, but there's a rental assistance cliff as well. And it's not just for, for renters, but I, as I mentioned earlier, it's for our landlords too, because I don't want them to sell off five or six properties and then buy a property on the water, right? We want them to be able to stay and, and, and have those, those rental properties available in safe communities for families and individuals to be able to rent and take care of themselves and their families and be able to walk on sidewalks to school and do the things that they need to do to sustain themselves because they're contributing members of our community. We know they are. And we want them to continue to be. And everything that we can do to assist them through these programs is a boost. And so we're looking at all of those in a pretty strategic and intentional way and taking a look at those dollars through a variety of these different bills in a package to be able to address those. And in addition to working with you all, you, you know, Lakewood has done a great job in terms of rental assistance programs and landlord mitigation programs, as is the county. And, and so it takes all three of us, you know, to be able to get those dollars out to help because we don't want landlords to sell their individual properties and buy, you know, a nicer home for themselves and then take away those opportunities for renters.
Thank you. I note that that fund that Representative Levitt just mentioned coming, the pass-through through Congress for, for through commerce, excuse me, for rental assistance, is now the subject of open applications at Pierce County Human Services. So in a short inventory of the apparent availability of funds indicates that between the remaining funds from earlier allocations, the money that just came through from the state, and there's a set aside in, in the American Rescue Plan for rental and utility assistance. It appears that on a per capita basis, Pierce County as a whole would have just over $100 million for rental and utility assistance, and that would not include any additional money that might be allocated out of state revenues. And it would not include any money that came to Pierce County or the cities in the rescue plan. So it's rather robust, but matching that up with the need is going to be difficult. So, Mr. Whalen?
Well, thank you and welcome. It's great to see both of you here. And thank you for your representation of Lakewood and the 28th District. On the, the tenant assistance and landlord assistance, did I hear you correctly that the landlords, the residential landlords may themselves directly apply for assistance in the event their tenants don't do so? Is that part of the bill that's pending?
Yeah, that's what we're looking at. And so what we're hoping to do is be able to, for landlords and renters to get together because, you know, direct local source conversation is always the best, that they would work together and to assist the renters to know about these variety of different rental assistance programs. And then if the renter chooses not to, that the landlord could apply on their behalf so that they could get those dollars. And so it's a combination of a variety of different programs. And so it's a combination of a variety of different programs that would allow them to get those dollars to pay their mortgage, to therefore assist with the rent, right? To get the rent, to pay the mortgage, to pay the utilities and on and on and on. And so we're looking at all of those in addition to, you know, other kinds of, of housing options in terms of, you know, deposit fees and how we look at that and, and different kind of product options. And so it's a combination of, of different avenues in, in addition to the dispute resolution centers as a package, I am hitting it in all different directions to be able to do that. So yes, so if the renter doesn't, you know, respond, then the landlord could apply on their behalf. Yep, because you have to have all of it, right? You really do.
Yeah, I appreciate that. In my day job, I lived this as a part of my legal practice. I do both residential and commercial landlord tenant work, so I can tell you the stories are legendary on both sides.
Yeah, well, I sit on the, the House Housing Committee and have since I was elected and, and that's intentional. I asked for that committee. I also asked for capital budget because it has the Housing Trust Fund, right? Which is about housing. And so we're looking at all of those. Yep.
How about on the commercial side?
We're also taking a look at commercial leases. And so part of the package would, would involve rental assistance for commercial leases as well. So it's a combination of not just for housing, for individual, single-family homes, but, or multifamily, but then also for leases for our small businesses on the commercial side. Yep.
Well, thank you much. Lots of need, for sure.
Absolutely.
Other questions from council? For hands? Well, I'm sure there's a lot that we've missed. Representative Bransky and Representative Levitt, if there's anything you'd like to add before we move on on our agenda, you're more than welcome to. Though your time's valuable and we really appreciate your ability to carve this evening out for us.
No, just, just thank you for your work. Really appreciate it. Continue on. I know you're getting dollars out to serve the needs. Thank you to Councilmember Brandstetter for testifying today on rail safety. Rail safety is important in the twenty-eighth, as we all know. And so appreciate that. And Mr. Coffield is always readily available for a variety of different issues that we're, we're grappling with, so appreciate that. And, and we have your requests, they've been requested and we'll see what happens. But, you know, reach out as the next forty-one, forty-plus hour days are left in the session, feel free to, to reach out as we continue our work.
Yeah, same here. I, I don't have anything specifically to add, but always, you know, my office is available to you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and anyone else. If, if something comes up, don't hesitate to reach out. But yeah, and that, that, the offer goes into the interim too, you know, as we conclude this year's session, let's continue to work together in the interim to, to make sure that the needs of all of our constituents are, are met and continue to work on that partnership. So I appreciate your time and I am going to hop off and, and go to another meeting, but thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate it.
Well, thanks again for being here. We appreciate your accessibility. We know you have your work cut out for you and we won't keep you any longer, but we appreciate the fact that you have the twenty-eighth district at heart and you're doing good work for us. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
We now move to a Sound Transit update. For this, we have Ms. Katie Drool on behalf of Sound Transit. And I think we have Tiffany Spear, who will be the segue.
Yes, and my apologies, Mr. Mayor. Apparently I'm not going to show up for you this evening. I'm having technical issues, but I'm here. I should say I'm, I'm not a cat and I'm live, right?
A disembodied.
In any event, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Tiffany Spear, I'm just here to really introduce the discussion you're about to hear from Katie Drool, who's with Sound Transit. As you know, there have been a couple of technical advisory group meetings that have been happening behind the scenes and Public Works Director Paul Bucic and myself have been serving on that on behalf of Lakewood. But coming to you tonight is a discussion for you by Ms. Drool about the Sound Transit Board and what they're doing regarding budgeting, as well as the specifics for the access improvement project, which is intended to improve the usability and accessibility of the sound, sounder station in southeast Lakewood. So with that, I'll turn it over to Katie.
Thanks so much, Tiffany. And if we could also promote Zach Eskenazi, who is going to help with this presentation, that would be great. And he's going to pull up the slide deck, so if you'll stick with me for a moment while it's my face on the screen. I really appreciate your time tonight, Mayor and council members. We are here today to talk about the Lakewood Station Access Project. And before we do that, I'm actually gonna, well, actually I'll introduce myself. I'm all thrown off from not having my talking points up. So Katie Drool, I work on the Government and Community Relations Team in the South Sound, and I think you've heard from my colleague Andrew Austin recently as well. We work together. And then Zach Eskenazi is here also tonight. He's the High Capacity Transit Development Manager for Sounder South and the Project Managers for the Access Project. So we are just at the very beginning of the planning process for this project and so wanted to come and provide you an update. We also, coming up in a couple of weeks, have an early round of public engagement. So I want to make sure again that this project is on your radar, so we're getting your input and hopefully your help in getting the, the public to weigh in. At the same time that we're doing this work on the Access Project, we are also, the Sound Transit Board is also in the middle of the capital program realignment process. You maybe have heard about this a little bit. That work will potentially impact future phases of the Lakewood Access Project. So before I hand it to Zach to talk about the nuts and bolts of what, what we're hoping to do at the station, I'm going to kick off just quickly by talking about the realignment work. So we can still working on getting the slides up. Or maybe everybody else can see them. Zach, do you want me to share?
Yeah, I brought them up. I thought, can, is it? See them? Let me try again. Pardon, pardon me here while I bring this up. How about now? Nothing? Now? Okay, I think, yeah, okay.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. I think we can see it now.
Great, thanks, Zach.
Sorry, everybody, we use Teams.
All of the different platforms are, are something to adapt to. So I mentioned capital program realignment. We, we know this is true for lots of local governments. Sound Transit is in a challenging financial environment as a result of the pandemic-caused recession. It's impacted our revenues and at the same time, we're still facing the increasing cost of real estate and construction continues to boom in our region. With the depleted revenues and higher construction costs, Sound Transit will not be able to deliver many expansion projects on their original timelines. Process called realignment, the Sound Transit Board of Directors is to determine how the plans and timelines for voter-approved projects will need to change to address the financial pressures that we're facing. While these projects, excuse me, while projects that are already under construction are not subject to realignment, schedules for projects not yet in construction will be considered by the board for their realignment decisions coming later this year. I know, you all know, there's a lot of different Sound Transit projects coming to South Sound. And so I just want to mention all of them and acknowledge that we're going to focus specifically on the Lakewood Station Access Project today. So before I keep going, the other projects that will be considered under realignment coming down to the South Sound are the Capacity Expansion Project for Sounder South, which is the longer platform, longer trains and potentially more trips. And then there's also the Extension of Service with two new stations in Tillicum and Dupont. These are, are different than the Sounder Access Project that we're talking about tonight. And then, of course, there's also the Tacoma Dome Link Extension, which will extend light rail service from Federway to Pierce County. So those are, those are all of the projects in the mix. We're going to talk specifically about access today. Here you can see the, next, next slide. You're, okay, you're all over it. Here you can see the, the various tools that Sound Transit is, has at its disposal for, for approaching the challenges to scope, schedule and budget that they'll be facing as part of the realignment process. The other piece of the puzzle, in addition to potentially changing scope, schedule and budget, is also pursuing new revenue to address the affordability gap. Note that we're, we're going to talk about the early planning process today. That is scheduled to end this fall and won't be impacted, but the future phases are what could be impacted by the board's decisions. And then here on the next slide, you can see the schedule. There's, there's a lot of work ahead for the Sound Transit Board as they consider these decisions. They're currently targeting a realignment plan being adopted in July of this year. That's when we'll have a better sense of the future phases of this project and then also those other sounder capital projects that I mentioned and the Tacoma Dome Link Extension. I do want to note, we're going to talk about the Access Project public engagement that's coming up at the end of March and then come mid-April, there will be another round of public engagement for folks if they are interested in weighing in on the realignment plans. I'm happy to make sure that you have all of those details when they're available. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Zach to talk about the Station Access Improvements Project. Zach?
Great, thank you, Katie. Hello, everyone. Oh, it looks like someone has their hand up. Mike, perhaps we could hold questions to the end of the presentation or we can take it now if it's on the realignment piece that Katie just presented?
I know we're, we're going to hold on questions.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for having me tonight. As Katie mentioned, my name is Zach and I am a Planning Manager at Sound Transit and the Project Manager for the Lakewood Station Access Improvement Project. So the project kicked off earlier this year and it's a project to improve access to the station for those who are biking, rolling, walking, taking transit or driving to the station. We expect the Access Project will support the great work of the city on the Lakewood Station Subarea Plan that's currently under council consideration. We are also working closely with city staff to identify potential access improvements to the station. As Tiffany mentioned earlier, we have a technical advisory group of which the city staff are a part of. The potential improvements for this project could include pedestrian bicycle infrastructure, bus speed and reliability investments, expanded pickup and drop-off facilities, as well as parking improvements. The financial estimate, plan estimate for this project, which is subject to the board's realignment decisions, as Katie had outlined earlier, is forty-four million dollars. And that's inclusive of, that's inclusive of planning, design, property acquisition and construction. To help get folks oriented to the station area in which we're referring to today for the Access Improvement Project, some of you folks are probably familiar with the station area, but just wanted to give a quick overview. So you can see here, in green is the ST-owned parking structure that's there today with six hundred stalls. Here in red, along Pacific Highway are existing pedestrian crossings to the station area. This year is the station platform itself, serving trains in the morning and afternoon. There's also a bus base where Sound Transit Express provides bus service. And there's a pedestrian bridge here that provides access to the station from the neighborhood here. And there are a few parking spaces, pickoff, pickup space and an ADA space located here. The project goals and objectives. So we do have some project goals and objectives. These were developed with input from our technical advisory group members. The project goals are affordability, access, environment, partnership and passenger experience. These goals and, these goals will help inform our criteria when we're assessing the proposed improvements. Regarding project activities and milestones, we're here now in spring of 2021. As we mentioned, we have just kicked this project off. We are conducting what is called our alternative analysis. This is the first phase of our project. Under alternative analysis, we will identify potential improvements this spring as part of that identification of potential improvements. And I'll get more into our public engagement in the next slide, but we do have a public engagement planned for spring. Then in the summer, we'll be evaluating potential improvements. In the fall, we'll conduct another round of outreach where we will work with you folks, the city, other stakeholders in the community to identify prefer, prefer to improvements for consideration by our, by the Sound Transit Board. And throughout this process, we'll be conducting technical advisory group meetings. And just a note on external engagement, wanted to provide you with a little more detail as to what that entails. So as we mentioned, technical advisory group, which includes city staff, Pierce Transit and Pierce County and Washed Out are also members of the technical advisory group. We, we are meeting monthly to continue collaboration on the project. Our online open houses, the one occurring this spring will be an online open house. It will go live on the thirtieth of March and be available for two and a half weeks. It will end around April sixteenth, I believe, fifteenth through sixteenth. There will be a survey involved in that where members of the public can provide input on the project through that survey. Again, focusing more on the identification of improvements in the earlier part of this phase of the project. Then also kind of occurring at the same time is ongoing virtual engagement with community-based organizations and other stakeholders that we've identified through collaboration with city staff. And then we will return to in-person events when we are allowed. We are hopeful that we could potentially do an in-person event in our fall outreach, but again, that is to be determined. And if the situation allows, we will, but if it does not, we will continue providing our engagement via virtual settings. That really concludes our presentation for today and would be happy to take any questions.
See, you have any questions? Mr. Wayland?
Thanks for coming. I know that you're probably early in the process, but what has been the feedback that you know of with regard to the need to expand the parking there?
So we haven't got much in the feedback or much feedback in the way of parking. What we do know is that for this particular project, there isn't enough funding to construct any structured parking.
Got it.
Parking were to be identified as a need, that we would then have to look at alternative options and get more creative in how to deliver that. But I think, yeah, right now I haven't heard much in the way of, of additional parking need. I will say that there's six hundred stalls. It's around ninety percent occupied. On average, that was pre-COVID.
Right.
Yeah, so, so we are, but we are studying, looking at it. And we'll, yeah, and I'm, I'm sure we'll probably hear about it if it's a need from our riders or the community wants to get our online engagement underway. And we'll, we can report back on that to you all.
Right. Well, it's just an interesting thought, because I know that there's property to the north of the existing structure that was set aside for the potentiality, right, of parking down the road? And assuming the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan gets good traction, which I am comfortable and confident that it will, I think we're going to attract a lot of people to that downtown, to that, that particular area for the use of, of transit. And certainly we want the walkability and I think that's a fabulous process you're going to go through and help us identify needs and how we can maybe meet those needs. But I would bet that at pre-COVID, ninety percent occupancy rates for the parking structure, there may be some need in the future for some additional parking.
Okay, thank you for that feedback.
Yeah. Mr. Brandstetter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the both presentations. Ms. Drool, the Lakewood Station Access Project was a Sound Transit Two project. In the realignment that Sound Transit is considering is our Sound Transit Two projects. Sound Transit Two projects going to be considered differently than Sound Transit Three projects. Essentially be considered to be done earlier with the later approved projects being ones that are more likely to move later.
That's a great question. The way that the projects are being approached is to, they're all being handled similarly, but one of the criteria that is being used to evaluate them is tenure, meaning how long has it been in the capital program and waiting to be built? So that's, that's one of, I think it's eight criteria. I'm happy to provide those via Tiffany so that you all have that piece of information as well. But that's certainly how long a community's been waiting for their projects is one of the factors that the board will be considering in their decision.
Well, it's not definitive, but it helps that it's a Sound Transit Two as opposed to a Sound Transit Three just for that timeline.
I, I think that, that is fair, yes.
And Mr. Eskenazi, in your presentation, you had a slide that says screening methodology and criteria. And I'm sorry, I don't know what number of your slide is, but it was page 19 in my packet. And it essentially says minimize potential project impacts to the built natural environment in underserved communities. And I certainly understand minimizing the impacts to the natural environment. I would say that one of the reasons why we're doing a subarea plan in particularly in our transit-oriented section there is we want to make some be a catalyst to make impacts to the built environment. So that things do in the built environment essentially that there are things that are, that are done that are going to cause the built environment to change. So I'm not quite sure that that aligns with a a goal of minimizing the impact, you know, as opposed to making a positive impact on the built environment. And I would think that there is something similar in terms of impacts to underserved communities of where rather than minimizing impact to them, you would want to maximize the positive impact to them. I guess I would just say that in a public outreach environment, you may want to praise that differently where you, people see you're trying to positively impact them instead of have as little impact as possible.
That's a good question. And actually, there was a change to that one. And someone else had that same comment that you, that you just provided. And so we actually have said it's, and I don't think the change made it to that presentation because as a result of our technical advisory groups that that was brought to our attention. So we've updated that to read minimize potential negative project impacts to the built environment and to to the, into the underserved communities. So we're putting that negative word in there to help identify that we don't, yeah, we want to make sure that our project isn't having adverse negative effects and to highlight, you know, and hopefully it has positive effects.
Yeah, and I would just say though, you should, in addition to not having negative effects, you really should have a goal of having positive effects and might be some way to communicate that. All right. Thank you very much. But I do appreciate both of your presentations.
Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Both of you, I think, commented on the Lakewood Station Plan. Could you talk a little bit about what kind of input you've been able to have in that process?
Katie, you want to take that question or I could?
Sure, we, we haven't, we have been sort of lagging behind the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan process, which I think is actually a great opportunity for Access Project because it means that build on that vision and, and see how some of the improvements can fit together. One really great opportunity that we had was when the public outreach happened last summer. You at the city gave us the opportunity to include some questions about our station so that we could glean a little bit of information via that survey. But I think, you know, we, we mostly have been observing and learning from the process and the vision for the Lakewood Subarea. And I see Tiffany came off mute.
I did. Just to piggyback on what Katie just said, that in addition to being invited to participate as a partner in the public survey we conducted last summer, Sound Transit and Pierce Transit were stakeholders in our drafting of the documents that the council has before them. So they were involved in the in-person stakeholder discussions last February, early March, and also in the virtual ones this last fall.
And then can I ask, I mean, there's been some, I think, build outs or there are in the process of some build outs around some stations, light rail stations in Seattle. The heavy rail station that, of course, has Kent Station. What has your experience been with those type of developments around around those, around those stations? Or is it too early to tell? And in other words, I'm, I'm looking for impact. So then when we talk about our station district plan, which, and you can tell there, I mean, it's a need of, an area in need of redevelopment. But I'm touching on concerns in the Seattle area about gentrification around some of the, some of the stations in South Seattle and those kinds of things. So are you in a position to kind of give us some general guidelines, not guidelines, but general observations about what kind of development has occurred around these stations?
If it's not a fair question, that's okay.
I, I think I'd like to take that question back and talk to some other folks who work more on, on that piece of the puzzle, both the transit-oriented development and and gentrification and limiting gentrification impacts and circle back.
Yeah, I, and I would, I would appreciate that. Speaking for the council, I think that we would like to know some learn, some lessons learned if, if they're out there. Now, we realize that the it's unlikely that the kind of building that would occur around a light rail station in Seattle, which is fairly close to downtown Seattle, probably would not occur in Lakewood, but we could still learn, you know, there's, there's a number of questions as we're working through this process. We've already already come up with parking issues and those kinds of things. Are there some lessons that we could learn or that you could certainly tell us that we could take back and and maybe inform our decision on the station plan, which, you know, we're going to be asked to pick up here in the next month or so. So.
You bet. Well, I'll work on getting.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Look, a couple of questions. Back to parking, you know, anecdotally, there's a fairly widespread belief in the city of Lakewood that parking in, the parking ride at 512 and in the Sounder Station in Lakewood is heavily used by residents of Thurston County that don't pay the Sound Transit taxes. They come up and those are the first two stops and then they commute to Seattle or their King County jobs, whether by express bus or train. And so while here in Lakewood, we have a nice facility, a lot of it's being used by people from Thurston County who aren't paying. And one way to mitigate the, the cost of that and provide for additional parking may be to charge people who are non-residents of the district. What, if anything, has Sound Transit done to look into that? Because I know it's been brought up on more than one occasion.
Yeah, that's a great question. So one, one thing that is perhaps the inverse is that we have the permit parking program, which is only available to people who are residents of the district. So through that program, if you're arriving in a carpool, you can get a free pass if you're commuting 12 days per month. If you're a single occupant vehicle, you can purchase for $45 a month a pass for Lakewood Station and there, there are reserved parking stalls. Perhaps you've seen them with signs for permit parking and that program is only available for people who are residents of the Sound Transit District. So that, like I said, is sort of the opposite of what you're suggesting. But the other part of the parking management program that is coming along in the future will be daily paid parking. And I, I don't know if it is factored in whether somebody is a resident of the district or not to access that program, but that's something that I, again, would be happy to provide more information to you on is just how that, that parking management program is evolving.
And I, and I think perhaps too, that, that, that kind of comment maybe provides us with this need to really balance how we're investing these dollars, right, versus parking that could essentially be accessed by, by non-Lakewood residents versus non-motorized improvements, bicycle improvements, things like that, transit improvements that would bring make perhaps more Lakewood residents to the station as opposed to folks outside of Lakewood. So perhaps that can go into our deliberations and thoughts on, you know, what is that balance going to be between the non-motorized transit improvements that we can make versus the motorized or, you know, more car-centric focused investments?
And I'll paralyze in advance, which for what may be your least friendly question of the night, but I'm interested in seeing what your talking point is. Sound Transit, it's, it's actually no surprise that a construction project costs more and takes longer than expected. That's kind of a rule of construction and Sound Transit has a history of that and that's not a surprise either. You now publicly have stated that you have $11.5 billion shortfall. Aside from the potential of cutting projects or spreading projects out, what has Sound Transit done or planned, does it plan to do to cut its overhead? And have any FTEs been eliminated?
There have been no FTEs eliminated. We've had a hiring freeze. So, so not backfilling positions. But that is, that is a fair question. And I think that really canceling projects is not something that we're talking about. It is, like you said, spreading them longer or perhaps changing the scope a little bit. I think that that those are, I guess, the pieces of the puzzle that I'm most aware of and, and we'll leave it there unless Zach, you want to add?
So is it accurate then to say that there is $11.5 billion in shortfall and no cuts?
Well, that is what the realignment decisions will be around is how the projects are delivered.
But no projects are anticipated to be cut and no overhead is anticipated to be cut?
I think one of the tools, Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, available to the board would be potentially to cancel programs, but I don't believe that's, that's their priority. Their priority is to the other tools available to them are looking at potentially changing scope of projects or delaying the delivery of, of, of projects. But I, I don't believe there is an interest in canceling projects. This is how I've, I've come to understand our realignment process. But it's a board process that they're currently going through with them ultimately making decisions this coming summer. Does that sound about right, Katie? Yeah. So we can't, Katie and I unfortunately can't really speak.
I totally realize you're the messengers and this is. Any other questions from council? Well, thank you for the update and for listening to Lakewood citizens' concerns and the outreach that you're performing. I know there are a variety of, of interests in how we can improve that site for enhanced use in the future, one of which may be having Amtrak stop there. So keep that in mind while you, you go forward.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for your time and I'm sure Tiffany and other staff will be providing you all with the information to access our online open house. So we would, we would love for you to, for all of you to come and participate in that online open house and we're happy to come back anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to public comment. This is when any member of the public may speak to any matter of pertinence to the council, whether or not it is on the agenda. Public comment during this COVID period is accepted by mail or virtual comment, email. Please send your comments in advance by mail or email to Brianna Schumacher, City Clerk at 6000 Main Street, Southwest Lakewood, Washington 98499, or B Schumacher at steveoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting have been provided to council electronically. Madam Clerk, has, have any comments been provided prior to the meeting?
Mayor Anderson, we received no public comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
But that doesn't preclude you from making a comment. You may make a virtual comment if you'd like by joining us on the Zoom meeting as an attendee by either visiting zoom.us and entering the ID number of the meeting, which is now on the screen, which is Or joining, using a Zoom link at, you either join using the Zoom link that, at that meeting ID or by dialing a telephone at 253-215-8782 and entering that same participant ID number, 868-7263-2373. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name or other identifier. Use the raise hand feature to be called upon. When you are called upon, you will have three minutes to speak. And each speaker is allowed that and will be able to raise the hand, use the raise, excuse me, raise, use the raise the hand function after that, but you won't be called on and won't be able to participate beyond your three minutes in the meeting. So Madam Clerk, if we go to attendees, first person who's interested in speaking is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, boy, am I thankful for our governor, Noem. She's at least eight months ahead of you in terms of every issue from employment to schools to whatnot. Strong leadership at the top. You re-put your soul. And you're about to harvest a very high degree of crime. Biden has literally destroyed every successful Trump policy at the, at the border. He cut the crime coming across the border by a great deal. So now because of his campaign speeches inviting people to come legally or illegally, there's a crisis at the border. We're starting to see hundreds of thousands of people that are coming. And of course, your state is very attractive for criminals. You've got a whole infrastructure all ready for them. You're a sanctuary state. You've got driver's licenses for illegal aliens so they can drive the drugs up here. You've got everything. You've got, you keep conflating the words legal and illegal. You're not cooperating. You're not cooperating fully with ICE. And what else? You know, the math scores, I've watched them for 30 years and I can understand why you can't reason when you make invites. In a world full of 7.5 billion people, how is it you can elect a politician that thinks he can make these open invitations with open borders? How do you do that? I think it's because you've had low math scores at a lot of your schools for years. So people can't reason, they can't reason in your state. And you're not a good neighbor to all the other states. But the drugs, they're coming, human trafficking, they're coming. And you know, you better start thinking, make your law enforcement, all of them get together, cooperate. They're talking about you all over the United States. I mean, I walk around the airport in Atlanta, people are so concerned about the crime on the coast from three bad neighbor states. They're getting very concerned. They're talking everywhere. So you gotta wake up. You can't, silence is a speech. When you stand silent, it's a speech that you're approving what the criminals are doing. Thank you.
That's all the people who've indicated they wish to speak at public comment. However, there's anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Please virtually come forward. I don't see anybody in the participants that signed in other than people on the program. So I'm going to declare public comment closed. Now move to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of February 16th, 2021. B, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of February 22nd, 2001, excuse me, 2021. C, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of February 22nd, 2021. D, motion number 2021-15, reappointing Sylvia Allen and Michael Lackety to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board through September 19th, 2023, and appointing Fred Ramey to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board through September 19th, 2022. E, motion number 2021-16, appointing Christina Manetti to serve on the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board through December 31st, 2023. Motion number 2021-17, appointing Sylvia Ann Johnson to serve on the Arts Commission through October 16th, 2023. And G, items filed in the office of the City Clerk. One, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of January 26th, 2021. Two, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting minutes of January 28th, 2021. And three, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of February 4th, 2021.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Bulkey, seconded by Ms. Farmer, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? On favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 O's nay. Motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda, resolutions. Resolution number 2021-04, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2021-04, expressing a commitment to value in diversity, equity and inclusion.
For this, we have Mr. Coffield.
Thank you and good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council members. Before you, as a resolution, which is an outcome from the Joint City Council and Clope Park School District Board of Directors meeting that occurred back in January, January 26th, 2021. The purpose of this resolution is for each elected body to jointly express a commitment to DEI or diversity, equity and inclusion and to work together and collaboratively, to further these efforts on behalf of the Lakewood community as a whole. One thing I would like to point out is that the, the school superintendent did pass on to me that they would like to request they be in the board, that this body considered this resolution in April, which is when they expect to consider it as well. I understand that they're going to be reviewing it as part of their next meeting, which is scheduled on March 22nd. And that's my report, Mayor.
And do, did the district share their rationale for wanting to delay it?
I think two things. One is they just want some time to review it. And then secondly, rather than one body approving it in March and another in April, they thought it would be beneficial if both elected bodies considered and approved it in the same month.
Okay, so the way we can move here is have somebody move and second it to to get the discussion going or somebody wants to continue it to a time certain, have that considered? Take that, Mr. Press Center.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would move to continue this resolution to 2021-04 until the regular meeting of April 19th this year.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would just say that in addition to the request from the school board, that I also think that the current draft of the resolution, and I'm not positive that a resolution is the right format for what we want to do, is somewhat bland. It's grammatically correct and politically correct, but it is not informed by any substantive discussions that we have had amongst ourselves or jointly with the, the board about some, some initiatives, the goals and objectives that we could put in front of a community in a joint statement to let them know where we are going. And I hope that the school board is looking at doing that and we have the opportunity on March 27th at our retreat to devote some time to actually add some substance to our intentions around the, the area of the diversity, equity and inclusion. And I think that that's why I think that moving it to where we at least three weeks beyond our retreat is going to give us a chance to maybe say something that will be a catalyst to involve the community in the way that we want.
Are you suggesting that we should draft a unilateral resolution? Is my understanding is this one was drafted with the school district?
I'm suggesting that we take up that question at our retreat.
All right, anyone else? So what we have before us is a motion to continue to date certain April 19th. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 O's nay. Motion carries. Now move to unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There, there is none, Mayor.
New business. Is there any new business to come before the council? If there is, there is.
I'll turn it over to the City Clerk.
Motion number 2021-18, Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2021-18, authorizing the award of a construction contract to RL Valley Company in the amount of $7,558,504.76 for the JBL North Access Improvement Phase One project.
For this, we have Mr. Bucic. And Mr. Pockwoodske.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Deputy Mayor Whalen, members of the city council. I can't tell you how happy we are to bring this before you tonight for a ward to RL Elia. As you know, this project started off as a much larger project, the JBL North Access Improvement Project. Because of grant funding, we had to break this project in two. We've been working diligently on getting this project out on the streets. We, as you can tell from your council packet, we had 14 bidders come in, which is a great number of bidders. We got exceedingly good prices on this project, both internally as well as Lakewood Water District are very happy with the outcome of the bidding. What I wanted to do tonight was just walk you through the detour plans that we have set up and talk to you about those because we've recognized from the beginning that this is going to have an impact on our commuters and our people traveling on our roadways throughout Lakewood. It's going to have a ripple effect. So I'm going to share my screen if I could. Well, that didn't work. Hang on a second. There it is. Sorry about that. Evidently, if you don't have it up on your screen, it won't share. So do you see the graphics on your screens? Excellent. Yes. So this is not only for yourself, but also of course for anybody else watching on it. You know that our project starts at Nyansah, goes up to Washington Boulevard and over to Interlock and about 200 feet west of it. Because of the nature of the work, we're basically going to have to shut down to local traffic only major portions of this corridor. Where plan is for the contractor to start off between Nyansah and Veterans Drive, but not including Veterans and Gravely Drive. So what you see in the black is going to be shut down for between seven to eight months. Because this is going to entail construction of a complete rebuild of the Nyansah interchange into a roundabout. And then all the way up with curb gutter sidewalks, shared use path, water main, landscaping, irrigation, illumination, it's a complete rebuild of this project, this road. Local access will be coming through the upper end at Veterans and Gravely Drive for the folks who need to get to their homes as well as the country, the Gulf and Country Club. We're going to address traffic by putting in basically two, two directions right through here where there's a current slip lane at Nyansah. And this shows you the nature of the roundabout and the work that needs to be done at this location, which is why it's not possible to run traffic through here while the contractor is doing the work. So people coming off the freeway will go straight up and people coming to the freeway will come straight on down. And there will be no stopping as you go through there. The next phase of work is really the roundabout at Veterans Drive. That's the big black dot we, we have right here. So we're going to continue to have traffic going around the east side and then around the north leg to Washington Boulevard. And then for people on Veterans Drive, while they have multiple routes, we're going to, we're going to mark it from Interlock and up Interlock into Washington Boulevard and then points to the east and to the north in that direction. Local access will be where the green dot is. We will have the road completely blocked off approximately where you see these green bars because that's where the work is all going to happen. However, we're working with Lakewood very closely to make sure we don't block both their, their regular access as well as the service delivery access. To get to the service delivery access, we're actually going to start building part of the parking lot. At least the access road that goes between where there are two trees, those will come down and then they'll be able to turn and go into their service entrance right through there. Once this is completed, oh, and by the way, I should also remember that there's a number of people who used to go to the Lakewood Water District to drop off their utility bills. It's been greatly reduced, of course, because there's no in-person contact. But we expect that during the course of this, as everybody hopes, we're going to be out of this and people will start to, to have free flow and go to the businesses once again. So they'll be accessing through this point. At this point on the fir-, the third phase, the roundabout at Veterans will be done.
No, your daughter would like to talk to you.
Oh, okay.
And the roundabout from Veterans and Gravely Drive all the way down to Nyansah, that will be open so people can come up through there and then access north to Interlocken or go down Veterans Drive to the new roundabout at Vernon or any of the side streets to get up onto Washington Boulevard. So this is going to be a bypass through here. This is where we think it gets a little bit trickier. In order to build a roundabout at Washington Boulevard, we're going to have to basically shut off access from Interlocken and just the new road we constructed on Gravely Drive in 2018, completed that from about there all the way through. And so it'll again be local access only to get up through these areas here. And then this is part of the detour route to get around the lake from this point where so is the number three, my hand is, go up and around to get to grab to I-5 down Nyansah and also from this direction here. And the last piece is the roundabout at Interlocken. And this one's going to, as you can tell, now we've got Washington Boulevard at Interlocken shut off still. We're going to have to run people down, go down Veterans. This, this shows Lake City Boulevard to get them up in there for those people who are going north into those residential homes. But the majority of the people like to bring them all the way down to the new roundabout at Vernon because that brings them on to the traffic signal on Washington Boulevard. And then we'll be shutting off traffic on Washington Boulevard heading towards Interlocken in this direction. Last thing I want to point out is, is that in the first project in 2018, a lot of people were redirecting themselves to go up north to a lot of the residential roads and we still hear complaints from people about who live there about people going too fast, using it as a cutoff bypass. So one of the first actions the contractor is directed to do is to come up into this region up here and install, I think it's five different speed tables. Now, these are going to be permanent tables and this will do two things. Number one, it'll slow people down during construction coming through here. And number two, it's going to help people decide this isn't their bypass route they want to go through on a regular basis. So we can keep the traffic load down there long-term on a more reasonable residential basis. Also down here, right off of Veterans Drive, there's a little short, two little short roads that have been a real problem for the residents there as Veterans Drive is being constructed. So we're going to be putting in two speed tables on that route too, to slow people down. With that, I'm pleased to answer any questions you may have about the project and really excited to get going on this.
Questions for Mr. Bucic. Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, how, I might have missed it. How, how long is construction planned for total?
18 months.
18 months. So they'll, they'll start in the next couple of months, you think?
The expectation is with a ward tonight that the contractor would actually start the latter part of April.
Okay.
Take about seven to eight months to do from Nyansah up to, but not including the Veterans, new Veterans Roundabout. And then if I'm remembering correctly, it was two months at Veterans Roundabout. And then another couple of months to go up to Washington Boulevard. And three months through the Washington Boulevard interchange and another couple of months to get through the Interlocken. So all told, if, if things go really well, 16 months, but realistically what we're planning for is about an 18-month timeframe.
So south to north, you, you are starting at then Nyansah, that, okay.
Yeah.
So so hel-, help me with the, and I didn't, I don't have the table in front of me, the actual bid sheet that we're approving tonight. It looked like- It looked like where the, where the winning company one was on the bid for the water. Is that correct? Are we, are we treating this as one bid?
It's one bid.
Okay. So, so they actually were a little bit higher. I guess I've never, we've never run into this before where the road work was actually a little bit higher, but the.
Well, if you, if you look at, if you look at the councilmatic memo and you look at the fiscal impacts, you'll see that what we had projected for the work, for the city's work was seven point two million and the bid came in six point four million.
Okay.
So you, and you see that our projected budget savings for our project portion is about eight hundred fifty thousand. Now Lakewood Water District got about a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar savings. So of course they're very pleased with it. I'm very pleased with it. How the contractors split out their bids, we don't have any control over. But the total package still came in considerably lower than what was expected at nine million dollars. And we had a spread of seven and a half million up to nine point eight million.
So we, we treat it all just as one bid.
Yes, we do.
For legal purposes.
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I, I, I just, I know we've done stuff with them in the past, but this is the first time I remember seeing where our side, there was actually another company with a bid that was a little bit lower, but okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Waylon.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Bucic. I appreciate all of the work you guys have done on this. I mean, it's the Omen's work to get a project of this size up and running. Do we know much about R L A A L A? I haven't heard of them before. I know Tucci and they were about twenty five thousand. The local folks behind the lowest bid, but what do we know about R L A A L A?
Well, we know that they're building our Lakewood Drive project right now. And we also know that they're also build their one hundred eleventh, one hundred twelfth street project right now.
So you're happy with them?
So far, so good.
Good. Okay. On the the construction work and the detour work, obviously it goes without saying, it's going to take a lot of communication with the neighbors and the residents in those areas. What's the communications plan look like?
Thank you for the question. Prior to even moving forward with the advertising, we, we sent out notices to sixty four hundred different residences within a half mile. We warned them about the project. We told them about the project. We told them the plan for the project. We told them the detail, detour routes of the project. We've also set up a specific project website on the city's website that has the ability for, who are interested, people interested to sign up for email updates. Troy Pockswinski, who's also on the Zoom meeting with us right here as a project manager. He will be working with our new communications manager to update the website, the project website weekly to tell people what's going on and what, basically what I've told him is over inform. Over inform people until they get tired of reading the emails from us.
Exactly. When was the last mail communication, the little postcards?
Troy, can you speak to that? What was the date on that? We sent out a couple of weeks ago. I can't remember the date.
Yeah, it was, it was the second week of February when I.
Okay. So fairly recent. That's good.
Thanks, Troy.
Yeah, appreciate that. And then of course I will get asked by the art commission folks. So what happens with the great Lotus Blossom at Washington?
I'm glad you brought that up.
Of course, of course.
If you recall, more than a few months ago, when we were briefing the council on this project, we talked about the Lotus Blossom. Where should it go? Where could it go? What was relayed to us by the artist and to you, to the council was that the artist would prefer to stay up there at Washington Boulevard intersection. We have two choices. Right now it's currently planned to go in the middle of the new roundabout. It's got trees around it that we're going to have to think about how to keep from obscuring it. The other option is to move it off of the center of the roundabout, move it over to the landscaped area. Because with the way we're redesigning the roundabout, there's going to be a landscaped area, a pretty big landscaped area right next to Lakewood Water District with a concrete walkway through that area. I had suggested previously and still think it's a great idea. So of course it's my idea, just kidding. That we moved the Lotus Blossom over there. People can see it. People get close to it and it's more of a attractive place for people to come through. Plus, if we're also thinking about eventually having more artwork going around Gravely Lake because we're going to have a ten-foot shared use path and some parking areas. Then the philosophy would be get people close to your art, give people an opportunity to see it and really engage with it as opposed to driving by it. We're happy to put it in either place. My recommendation, if we can, is move it over into the new location.
Well, I like your thought about creating more accessibility to it because I think in the middle of a roundabout, it's tough unless you're playing Frogger. And that's never a good idea, crossing lanes of traffic. Is there any thought that's been given perhaps to locating it over where the parking area might be for Lakewood Garden? Because that's a natural place where people might get out of their cars. They're going to walk on the path anyway. Maybe we could, we could create a spot for it that might be visible, but accessible. And, and my final piece on that is to my last dying breath, I want to make sure we get some uplighting, some electrical to it so that this time around it actually gets uplifted so it can be seen at night.
So to answer your first comment, or your last comment first is yes. Uplighting to it can definitely be put in as a part of this. Troy would have to correct me, but I'm not sure if we have the light on it now. But on the other roundabouts, we've been putting, I, I'm kidding, I don't mean right now. I mean as a part of the design. But on all the roundabouts, we're putting power into them for exactly that reason. We did that on Veterans Drive. We'll do it here. The one thing I would say is that Lakewood Gardens has already been talking to us about putting art in the parking area down there. They're very excited about the concept of having art around the lake, especially around their entrance. Because they want to be an art and music center for Lakewood.
Right.
So we have time. We don't have to decide right now because that part of the work isn't going to happen for quite a few months. So if we're going to move it someplace else, else than where in the roundabout, we have lots of time. It doesn't take much to move it. Well, that we're doing at once though.
If we've got a little time, that may be worth a mini discussion. Councilmember Bell and I might be able to kind of get with the council, with the Arts Commission and certainly get feedback from the council. And I just want to note for the record, I saw Troy nodding his head, know about lighting plan for this piece of art. I want to see a head nod up and down. I want to see some uplighting for that darn piece of art.
I didn't see him shaking his head.
Yeah, shake it yeah, up and down, please.
It, it's easy to do for us.
I'm going to commit to it so that we don't forget it this time. Wherever it's going to be.
Well, lighting will be better than water.
Yeah, yeah. Well, exactly. It's cheaper as long as you plan for it. So it might be worth, Paul, taking a look at the possible roundabout in front of Lakewood. If it's better for you folks than it would be over in Washington as option A for it, or B on the Lakewood side of the street of Gravely Lake. So people could actually park and walk to it, see it, take a picture by it and get on the actual trail.
They, we'll take a look at the parking lot for sure. The only concern I have there, I got to look at it is there's not a lot of big space there.
Right.
So we would need to put it at the end of the parking lot.
Right.
That would be a good place for it. I would really rather not put anything that we want people to get close to in the roundabouts because quite frankly, they're not going to play hopper Frogger to get to it. And I think that's one of the big problems of where it is now is you drive by and you see it, but you really can't, you can't appreciate it.
Right. Especially at night because Troy, there's no light.
We're going to light it up for you.
Thank you.
This is Farmer.
We're going to light it up within reason under our dark skies. I'm going to use the wrong terminology, but we, thank God JBLM is close by. So we need to protect our skies and keep them dark. I always get freaked out when people talk about uplighting because it just shines light into the sky unnecessarily, but I love the controls and, and the restrictions that we have here in Lakewood to protect our dark skies. So there you go. Um, but that was not what I wanted to ask. So I had a couple of random questions. Mr. Bucic, you at the very, at the tail end of your, of your presentation, you mentioned a small jog off of Veterans? That, that I'm just curious what street that was.
Oh, I'm going to turn to Troy because I know he knows that street better than I do. There's two streets there, actually.
Two streets.
It, it's Pine and Langlow.
Thank you.
Okay. I know a couple of folks who live over there and were, were interested in this project and so curious about that. Thank you. I know we talked a little bit about the residential communications program and I note that the memo mentioned one flyer. So is that the flyer that went out the second week in February? One flyer. So you're planning on one flyer? Total?
Well, in the flyer, it had a link to the city's website and told people to go there to get constant updates. So if they do that and they go to the cities in the project website, they can sign up for emails. And every time the project's website is updated, they will get an email saying there's been an update. Go look at the information. Those flyers, by the way, I mean sixty four hundred of them costs us over three thousand dollars to send out.
Yes.
My preference is, is that we direct people to a location where we're updating it regularly rather than send out flyers on a regular basis. Plus, there's also going to be the portable message, message signs that will be up. We'll be installing those a couple of weeks before construction and then those will be moved around as we move from, from segment to segment.
In the communications business, it, it's wonderful to send something out, but you can never guarantee that somebody on the other end is actually going to make it from the mailbox into the house and then in the house, is it going to be read by the person who cares and, and that sort of thing? So I know that these things are expensive, but it'll be interesting as the project progresses to see if there isn't anything we can if there, if, if there's anything we need to do with the, the city's new communications manager to, to augment that. So.
Certainly.
This, Mr. Caulfield, you had to comment on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Councilmember Farmer will also be putting an article in the upcoming Community Connections Magazine, specific to this project as well, similar to what Mr. Bucic and his staff sent out.
I appreciate that. As many touches as possible. But people invariably say they didn't send me a letter. And so it's always, it's always interesting to hear how people want to be communicated with. And of course they need to hear, they need to hear it and see it multiple times in order for it to actually go in. I think that is, oh, yes. So in exiting Interlocken onto Washington is a very difficult place to be. Is that, is that included in this and how might that be mitigated?
I appreciate the question. I would clarify that by saying entering onto Washington from Interlocken is not difficult. It's horrible. It is horrible. It is extremely dangerous. A lot of people don't go that way. That is being completely redone. We're putting a roundabout in there. We're raising up Interlocken from the north to the south. So a better site distance. We've acquired easements and property from adjoining property owners to allow us to build the walls, put the fill in to make it a safe interchange. Also, when someone's coming off of Interlocken onto Washington with a roundabout, they're going to be going to the right. As will people coming from Washington going towards Interlocken. They'll be bearing around to the right. And for those of council members who've heard us talk about roundabouts in the past, you know that roundabouts from an engineering perspective are so much safer because you don't have T-bone intersection. You don't have, or collisions. You don't have head-on collisions. If you have anything, it's going to be a glancing blow. And these are also designed to slow people down. So the site distance is going to be better. Access is going to be better. It's just going to be a world of difference at that intersection.
And I very much appreciate that. And I'm curious about during the construction process, when there are detours, will there be a problem with people stacking up on Interlocken trying to get onto Washington during? I didn't know, I couldn't tell from the, from the diagram if it, if people would be rerouted on Interlocken and there would be a problem there before the roundabout is built.
Well, I think throughout construction, we're going to be having to keep an eye on where people are going at all times and then adjusting the traffic control as, you know, on the fly, if you will, a little bit. So if we start seeing people stacking up, that we're going to have to adjust the traffic control out there to adjust for that. I think most people, when they, when they get used to what we're doing, they're probably going to try to avoid this area to the best of their ability. Especially coming down to Interlocken because if everyone's now going through Washington Boulevard and then to the north, Interlocken is not going to be a lot of fun to come down and try and get back on. I think a lot of people already know that. And so they're going to find alternate routes.
Okay. Thank you.
And just note, one of the ones, the groups that can't really find complete alternate routes is that all the folks who work at the Veterans Hospital and get off at the same time. They're a parade out of there already. So it's going to be an interesting challenge. Mr. Brandstetter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bucic, I just had a couple of similar questions to the deputy mayor's. But it, rather than being concerned about the Lotus Blossom, I'm concerned about the the gateway sign at Nyansah in Gravely Lake. That is in the middle of where you're redoing things. And I didn't see in the bid sheets the redoing the gateway as a, as, as an item. And then similarly in that same location, there is a Garden Club of Tacoma Blue Star Memorial sign monument marker. That's also there. And I was wondering, are we going to be able to retain that in some way through this project?
Councilmember Brandstetter, both of those are going to be preserved, retained and in the location. The gateway sign will be in the roundabout and then the Blue Star will be in the area to the east of the roundabout, which is a grassy area with some trails going through it. We're taking that little one chute slip lane and that's not going to be repurposed or rebuilt into just the driveway, if you will, for the three homes there. And we're going to slow people down so that use it as a cutoff. But that's where that Blue Star Memorial is going to go in that area.
This is Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just, most of my questions, I think, were mostly answered. It was a lot about the art and the communications piece. I live in this area and I know that I've received one piece and it was, I would say relatively complicated to understand. So that would be one suggestion and I would, something that would be a little bit easier for, for the residents. And then also if you could include something on the Lakewood three one one. I think that's where I go to for a lot of things for city information. And I think you can put like an alert or something near the top of that and that would have constant updates. I know that it goes with the email, but it, it is very, I don't know, I find it pretty, pretty resourceful, a good resource for me. But, and I know mailings are very expensive. I get that. I do that. But I do think that they're also really effective too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I join the chorus on not wanting to go too cheap on the communications because this is going to be a major long-term detour and, and having, I live where I have to go through that a couple of times a day and it was relatively easy to navigate around the Gravely Lake Drive project, the way it was set out because of the segment it was, you know, it only cut off certain number of folks and it wasn't in the main commute routes. But this touches on the access to the freeway and, and some commute routes. And just throw it out there for maybe our new communications person, we might want to actually, rather than just have the electric signs saying, you know, you have to detour now, have some fixed signs, maybe leaving up to the project that say, go to city's website, detour coming. And have something on the front page that's just maybe generic of the website. It's generic construction detours. So if people get there, they don't have to drill down three levels to find public works and traffic and, and it's just, you click on a button and it says, we have these projects and click once more on the project and you find out where you're going or where you can't go. But whoever is ending up designing it. But whoever is ending up designing it, I think we need to be robust about it.
Do we have the capability for like texting messages where people can opt into a text as opposed to just an email? Because I know the county does that and I find texting pretty effective.
Unfortunately, I do not know. I'm looking forward to working with our new communications manager starting tomorrow and I'm sure that he'll have some great ideas for us. You're talking to a couple of engineers who have been trying to do the best we can with communications out. And I think that we so far, we've been true and pretty good. But we also fully understand this is a major project. It's going to have a lot of impact. We're going to have some people who get it and some people who don't. In regards to councilmembers, farmers comment about some people read it, some people don't. We sent out lots of notices on Onyx Project. But as I talked to some of the residents when they called me, I said, yeah, people do not believe or read anything until the big yellow machinery shows up. And then all of a sudden, they realize this is real. So we're doing everything we can. We're going to have signs of VMS signs. We're restricted on so much that we on what we can put in the VMS signs. Because they're relatively short messages. But we're welcome to, I mean, we're definitely open to any and all suggestions. We don't want this to turn into any kind of a nightmare for staff or council or city manager. But unfortunately, the old adage, you can't make an omelet without breaking some eggs. And we're going to smash a bunch of eggs in order to make this a much better, more improved roadway for everybody.
Yeah. This is Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bucic, thank you so much for the information. A lot of the my questions have been answered. But I just wanted to remind us that the detour signs was an issue with the Washington Boulevard area. So if we can, if you can learn something from that process and it's because the biggest complaint was they didn't know what they had to do to until they got right at the sign or at the intersection or something. So if you can do something to kind of smooth that out a little bit based on what we learned from Washington Boulevard, that would be great. So thank you very much. It's it's a huge project. It's a huge project. I'm glad I don't have to travel that way too much.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, I I I guess one last suggestion is to learn from the Veterans Drive Project is that however we were liaising with the Veterans Hospital worked very well. You know, they they did actively regularly communicate in the different phases of that with their employees. But also with the patients who had appointments were given in in their reminder of their appointment, were given some cautions or some suggestions about detour routes like this. So whatever we did with them before, we would want to do with this project. And that can get us some goodwill in with a multiple audiences.
Yeah, we did spend quite a bit of time working with them before that Veterans Drive Project went out. If I could just put one plug, just as a reminder, we built intentionally, we built the Veterans Drive Project first so that we had a good, safe road to divert traffic onto when we went forward to build the JBL North Access Improvement Project. If we had been successful in getting the DCIP funding, we would have been starting a project that that was twice the size of this project. It was the whole full meal deal. And when we get the funding for the other half of that, we expected, well, our plan is to start that project shortly after this project is completed, assuming we are able to get the next DCIP round of funding coupled with the monies that we are able to save on this project, some others coupled with some stormwater bond funds that have been sold. So this project, once it's completed, the next phase will be from Interlochen down to the North Gate Road.
Well, you know, thank you. And I will I will note in that Mr. Caulfield and I were in a nonprofit meeting today when there were there was some negative comments that have been made regard in relation to the Veterans Drive Project. And it was, that's so nice. When's somebody going to do something about the road inside the VA Hospital? So it's it's been well received by this, by the by the patients and staff. And they only wish that the feds were as is on top of it as your department. So it's progressing nicely. We don't have a motion on this at this point. Any further questions for Mr. Bucic? And
If we need a Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve motion number twenty twenty-one eighteen.
Second. Been moved by Mr. Bulkey, seconded by Mr. Wayland, that we approve motion number twenty twenty-one eighteen. Make my commute miserable for the next two years.
All I'll say, Mr. Mayor, is that no matter how much we communicate, there'll be someone one block away who doesn't get communicated to and we're still going to get torched by it. But it's a big project and I think well worthwhile. So, yes. I urge adoption.
Any further discussion?
With lighting, so moved and approved.
That part of the motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close nay? Motion carries. Motion number twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, Madam Clerk.
Motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash nineteen, authorizing two thousand and twenty-one community development plot rent funding in support of a transportation project.
Mr. Bucic.
So, Council, if you'll recall, back in February, we had a project to do some street lighting out of the Oakbrook area. Based on concerns raised by residents, council directed us to cancel that contract and to come back with another proposal for using the CDVG grant funds. The project previously was funded with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of CDVG grant funds. There are now three hundred thousand dollars available. We took a close look at the twenty twenty-one street lighting program and determined that most, everything we were going to be doing was just basically hanging streetlights on existing poles, thank goodness. Very few new installs and that most of those areas really were not within a a census tract where CDVG funds could be used. So we took a look at other options, which included basically sidewalks. Working with Jeff Gumm, we've identified three potential areas for council consideration. Those are addressed in a memo to council. The first one is the Phillips Road, same areas, the previous streetlights, but on Phillips Road from Agit Drive Southwest to Onyx Drive. That project, we've estimated at four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. It is on the west side of Phillips Road. It completes the sidewalk loop, if you will, from Silicon Boulevard up into Onyx, down Onyx and back down eighty-third to get back on the Silicon Boulevard. It will also tie real well with the continuing work for improving Silicon Boulevard from Phillips all the way to Far West. Because of where the census tract lies, we can only do the west side of the road with CDVG grant funds. The east side is not available for grant funding, which is a bit of a shame because it was cheaper to do it on the east side than it is the west side because there's no, there's no driveways. We don't have to build any retaining walls. We have plenty of asphalt. We could just tear out, put in curved gutter sidewalk and a drainage swale. The second project we looked at was Forty-seventh Street Southwest, also identified with the graphic in your council package from our new road, a hundred and twenty-third street on the west side of forty-seven down to Clover Creek to the Swim Property adjacent to the Springbrook Park. That project estimates out at four hundred thousand dollars. Both on all three of these projects, the cost estimates are in your council package. This project would be a good project except for a couple of different things. The first one is that we know it's in the floodplain. No surprise because we did the flood analysis. We are ready to initiate a consultant contract in the next couple of months to look at potential engineering solutions or alternatives for alleviating some of that flooding, which may well include doing something with that swim property. So work that we may build out there, maybe throw away, depending upon what some of the engineering solutions are, AKA, do we want to put a berm around that to help contain some of the waters? Additionally to that, we have been working and talking to Sound Transit, who you heard earlier from tonight, about some of the potential uses of that forty-four million dollars. One of the areas that we've been talking to them seriously about evaluating on on their behalf is curb gutter sidewalk road improvement from the Sounder Station down Forty-seventh to the end of the road. The reason for that is that accesses a lot of low-income housing within that community. Plus, we already have a pedestrian pathway that gets up to the park and to the rest of the housing community up there. They've been asking Pierce Transit if there's a way to reroute a bus to go through there to make it even more attractive to to the Sounder Station, to get people to not just walk and bicycle, but also to grab a bus to go down to the Sounder Station. In addition to that, we also have a lot of interest from developers. We have the, I won't say their name, but a developer actively looking at what was going to be an apartment complex just on the north of a hundred and twenty-third and just west of forty-seventh. There's a big tract to land there. They've been working with us quite a bit to figure out how to alleviate the the compensatory mitigation problem they have with fill in the floodplain. I think they've pretty much got it worked out. They will be required to do curb gutter sidewalk and a half-lane improvement between one-twenty-third and one-twenty-first. On the other side from them is the county former gravel pit. That's a very large piece of land, twenty-some acres, twenty-three or twenty-five acres. I can't remember exactly. It could be as high as twenty-eight. And whoever develops that site is also going to have new curb gutter sidewalk their entire frontage. So that leaves us down on the south end of forty-seven. And there's another five acres owned by another gentleman who's talking to us about what he can do with that property. He'll have to curb better sidewalk also. So there's a real opportunity that we could get others to build all these improvements on the city's behalf. Plus, if we build this, it won't be bad, but I I really am concerned that we would build work that we would end up having to get rid of or damage in the future based on our flooding analysis and solutions that come out of that. The last potential location is real close to City Hall. It's on Davison Road from a hundred and eighth down to a hundred and eleventh street. It's it's approximately the same length as the Forty-seventh Street project. Not a bad project, but it's only a half a road rebuild and it's a sidewalk that doesn't tie into anything. It doesn't tie and doesn't get people down to the high school. But it's not a bad project. It's also one that could be done. It just doesn't close the loop. There's existing street lighting out there that's a real mix of on wooden poles, new metal, not new, but metal poles. So before I would go forward with that, I really wanted some direction. If you have an inclination based on what we've heard in Onyx, are you comfortable we would go with putting new poles in, new wooden poles? Or do we want to continue the mixed mash in there of the wooden poles and the metal poles? Cost-wise, they're both about the same, four hundred thousand dollars. The cost spread on city contributions are about the same. We would need to do twenty-four thousand-ish out of the general fund for Forty-seventh and Davison. Swim would be about the same. I think it's around seventy-six thousand. Let me look real quick here. Yep, seventy-six thousand on both. The more expensive one for city funds would be the Phillips Road project at seventy thousand, but we tapped the Swim Fund for eighty-two. So it's a little more expensive a project, but the advantage of that is it does close the loop. It does give connection to Lockren Middle School. It does get people down to the eventually to the town town center faster in the game farm park, et cetera. From our perspective, we would recommend that should council want to support using a CDVG grant funds for a sidewalk project, we recommend the Phillips Road project. I do know that next week, you're going to be hearing from Jeff Gumm on the recommendation of the Community Services Advisory Board for the annual action plan for the twenty twenty-one CDVG. And he's very interested in hearing what council recommends tonight so we can include it in his packet for review and then bring it forward to council as a as a full package. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I approve adoption of motion twenty twenty-one dash nineteen in support of a sidewalk improvement project on Phillips Road.
Been moved by Mr. Brandstetter, seconded by Ms. Farmer to adopt motion number twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carries. So we now move. Thank you, Mr. Bucic. You have your work cut out for you. So that we now move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you again, Mayor. Once again, good evening, Council. Actually, the first item that we'd like to review with you is I should like to turn it back over to Mr. Bucic and Jake Johnson, who is our federal government relations contractor. If the city clerk, if you could let Mr. Johnson into the meeting, that would be fantastic. Late last Tuesday, a week yeah, six days ago, we were contacted by Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland and she had two asks for us. One was, could we identify and submit, for lack of a better term, a transportation earmark infrastructure project? Though they are now calling them congressional community projects. And so we worked quite feverishly the last few days and then to get this on the agenda. And, you know, we consider this to be a pretty significant policy issue. So rather than myself making the decision, we did ask for a two-day extension because Ms. Strickland actually wanted this by today, close of business. But we asked for a two-day extension and they graciously did provide that. So if council takes action tonight and gives us some direction on what to do, we have enough time to prepare the material so we can get it over to her. But again, this evening, we have Mr. Bucic and Mr. Johnston to kind of do a walkthrough, talk-through on our thoughts here as well as what our recommended project is, which is Nyanza. But with that, I'll turn it over to, I don't know who's going to go first, Mr. Bucic.
I was, thank you. I was going to suggest that perhaps that Jake go first to answer any questions concerning the federal legislation or the timing of it, that I can get into the individual project.
Great, thank you. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council, thanks for the chance to see everybody again. It's nice to be here. Congress has reinstated a practice, basically that's been absent for eight years. And this is, you know, colloquially known as earmarking, but they're calling them community project requests. And they have created a series of reforms necessary to make sure that they can start to partner with local communities on projects, but in the same time, try to alleviate some of the concerns that were with the practice in the past. So for for twenty twenty-one, community project requests are only available to public entities. That's number one. Number two is that all applications for community project requests, including what the subcommittees do and the full committees, all the way through the consideration on both chambers, will be a fully public process. So the application that we put in, even if we're not selected, will be a searchable, publicly available resource that that other people will be able to 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 look at. There's there's other concerns about this. The number of earmarks that are available, though, are limited to a total of ten per member of Congress. And that there are only certain programs are eligible for earmarking in the federal budget. So we're not going to be earmarking, you know, the overall federal appropriations budget. It's going to be certain discretionary spending programs and grant programs that exist. So the Appropriations Committee continues to set up some guardrails and some guidelines around what types of projects are available. We've been working hand in hand with Congresswoman Strickland. And with that, we have, we have a project that we'd like to put forward, kind of based on council input and recommendation. And I'd just like to say before Paul talks about the project a little bit more, is that this is earmarks are in the appropriations bills, which we have a deadline of this week in order to submit. But there's also going to be a transportation bill being considered later this year, which will also have earmarking opportunities in it. So what we really have are three federal funding opportunities for transportation projects for the city of Lakewood this year. We intend to resubmit a defense community infrastructure pro program grant request to finish the north, the North Gate kind of project that that Mr. Bucic was talking about earlier. The project we're going to talk about right now complements that. And then the third one later this year would be a would be a different project to bring forward at the at the appropriate time. So that's, that's the lead in. I'm happy to take any questions about the process or or the politics of of this this change.
Are there any guidelines on the size and scope of an individual process, project?
Mayor, there there are no written ones, no. So we're doing this based off some some hard math, looking at some of the size of those project budgets that are available and then the amount of money that we think might be eligible. But we're also doing it a little bit that if only public entities are able to access earmarks essentially in in this year, the overwhelming majority of them are going to be infrastructure focused. That's just, that that's where the biggest need is frankly for federal partnerships. So we're trying to, we're trying to tuck in earmarks kind of within an appropriate funding size. And that size is a best guess, to be completely blunt about it. But we think it's based on conversations with staff. It's based on conversation with delegation, and it's based on guidance from what Congress has historically done. So with that, we're looking at something certainly sub five million and probably, you know, closer to three as a median.
Do they anticipate matches or does that depend on the program?
It depends on the program. And what I would say is that for infrastructure and transportation projects, the more you can match, the higher your competitive consideration. What they really want to see with earmarks is basically how fast can you utilize them?
Mr. Bucic?
Okay, if you would like me to, Council, I'd be happy to walk you through the assessment on the projects. We started off with the top eleven projects we have presented to Council as for consideration on the Transportation Benefit District Bond Funding. As Jake indicated, our number one is JBLM North Access Improvement Project Phase Two, which is the completion I spoke of earlier about the larger connection project. Since we're pretty, pretty confident, as confident as you can be at this point, that it'll be viewed very favorably for DSEP funding. We're not actually proposing that that be one of the earmarks or forgive me if I keep using the earmarks. It's much easier than long community project funding. The second project on our list is the Nyanza project. And what this project does, as you know, is it closes the loop around Gravel Lake Drive. It provides the clean access for people coming off of I five to get to the town center. While we may like the project extensively, it may be a difficult one for us to obtain grant funding for because there is a clean route to get to downtown after we complete the rest of it this next eighteen months. It will improve the non-motorized and all the way around the lake. It's going to be a good project for us. It it it's close to the sweet spot on the funding. It's a little more expensive than the grant than the earmark is set up for, but that is our recommended project for moving forward with a four million dollar app. The third project we looked at is one hundred and twelfth street between Gravel Lake Drive and Bridgeport. This is also one of the projects that we've been talking to Sound Transit about for construction using some of the forty four million dollars because it allows people with the rest of the projects we've been doing west of that, it allows people to use non-motorized ways mean to get to the Sounder Station. It ties in beautifully with our one hundred eleventh to one hundred and twelfth street project we're starting construction on now. We sound transit funded. So there's a good probability that they're going to pony up a lot of the money, if not the full cost, for building this road and non-motorized improvements from Gravel Lake Drive to Bridgeport. So it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to use that as our earmark app. The fourth project for consideration is the reconstruction of one hundredth street between Lakeview Drive and South Tacoma Way. This project is a very important project also for the city. It's got commercial. It's a, it's one of the entrances into the town center and the community proper. We also feel though that this is going to be a real strong contender for that second body of earmarks on transportation later this summer. So this is the project we want to put forward for the next body of earmarks. When we look at the fifth and sixth projects that we had in the top eleven, these are on Silicon Boulevard. What's changed from the last time we talked about the TBD funding is we've been notified that one of our projects before PSRC that was on the contingency list, and that is the improvements between eighty third and and Weller, that we are going to get one point, almost one point five million dollars for the two point two million dollar project, with a good likelihood that as the PSRC finds more money, we're going to get more to help us complete that project. So that's a big chunk for us. It doesn't make any sense to try and go after that. And then the remaining piece we need for Silicon Boulevard is only a million dollars to do the sidewalk improvements from eighty seven down to Far West. So Silicon Boulevard is looking really good right now. Looking to a crystal ball, speaking of the complete that, doesn't make a lot of sense to have that part of our earmark right now. And then the second tier we looked at, and they just, they just didn't look like they were great options except for tester from Bridgeport Way to Seventy Fifth. It also is in a little of the sweet spot. But when we do a comparison of that and we look at the Nyanza project, how it completes that part of the of the city, we're recommending that we earmark request for the Nyanza project for this first step and then one hundredth street between Lakeview and Silicon Boulevard, South Tacoma Way, excuse me, for the next phase. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Jake also can help, help me with any of the questions you might have on the allocations.
Mr. Bulky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, a couple of questions and then one for Jake. So Paul, would, how how far along are we on the planning? If you, are we in the design phase on Nyanza or we're at, where are we at?
We're at, you know, ten fifteen percent conceptual.
Okay, so when when Jake says the sooner the better, kind of, we won't use the word shovel ready, but we can get it, we can get it dug up in a fairly short timeframe. What would that timeframe be in your mind?
It's a straightforward project. Unless analysis says throw a roundabout in at the end, add Gravel Lake Drive and Nyanza on the other end, then it'll be a signal improvement. We can do that design in a year's time.
So ideally, we would just tear up both Nyanza and Gravel Lake Drive so we could have chaos.
Not at the same time. No, no, no. Excuse me. I meant once we got the go ahead and we were
hoping we would do that just to see the chaos. Anyway, and then we just have them call Whalen when they have a complaint, but okay, so we're we're a ways away, but that's the, okay. And so Jake, when I hear ten per member, there's four hundred and thirty five esteemed members of our House of Representatives. That's four thousand three hundred and fifty projects. And then, of course, senators, I think, would like to weigh in too. So clearly not all these projects are going to get funded. What do you think are the odds are here? I mean, how, what are you thinking that they're gonna? How how they're going to parcel this out?
I don't know how to give you exact odds. We haven't done this process in eight years. I will tell you that we only did forty three or fifty earmarks. That would be about a third of the number of earmarks that the last time Congress had this practice in action. We'd be roughly a third to forty percent of what that that total number was. So yeah, this is actually, believe it or not, a a big curtailing of what was historically done. So I think by by drawing a box around the certain programs that were were going to be earmarking and then making some eligibility requirements around them and then limiting the number of applicants to public entities only, I I think we're going to see, you know, a number of projects put forward that frankly need that federal investment in order to bring them over the finish line. One more political comment on the timing, because I want to make sure that I'm understood correctly. Obligating the money is, of course, a value for selecting an appropriate project to put forward. They don't want to throw money in that can't be put to use relatively quickly. That being said, though, there's there's enough intelligence kind of in the process to understand that if cities don't get to a pre-construction phase with too many projects unless they've already got the funding, you know, identified for how you're going to pull it off. So when you're, when you're bringing projects that have a hole, basically a funding hole, they're 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 usually one to three years away from being finished. And that's just part of, that's just part of how infrastructure works.
Well, I'm, I'm actually, I think this is, and not just from a Lakewood perspective, but I I really am hopeful that bringing back earmarks and the horse trading that comes along with that actually helps Congress work better. I I think it's been a, personally, I think it's just been a factor in their, their issues that they've had. And we can call it what we want, you know, and make make fun of some of the deals that got done back in the day with people like Robert Byrd. But I think in some ways it helped the the body move, you know, kind of grease the the machine or oil the machine. So I'm, I'm actually very hopeful that this will work for everybody and that we'll get something out of it. I think that's great. Thank you.
Yeah. Just, I can't resist making my editorial comment on that, whether it's, whether it was the Freedom Caucus and the Republican Majority or the New Progressives, yet there has to be something to whack them over the head to get them to do the country's business, though. Maybe this is, this is an improvement. Mr. Branstad?
Yes, yes, that, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am supportive of using Nyanza as a project that we submit. And one of the reasons for that is it is not exclusively a transportation project, but that it is also a park project. Because in our legacy plan and we formally established the Gravel Lake Loop as the major linear park that we wanted to to do. And so the benefits of this project extend beyond transportation and even somewhat beyond just non-motorized transportation. It's not just a road with non-motorized attributes. It's a, it's a park and we can build in some of those periodic amenities along the route that are conducive to making a a really good community. And I think that it, it also would avoid us getting to the point of where we complete the JBLM North Phase One project and then go for years without prioritizing the last part of that linear park and and being able to go and do that. And maybe the fact that it's got a park element to it will help us competitively.
Mr. Whalen?
Well, I just want to echo my agreement with the recommendation for Nyanza. You know, not only is it part of our non-motorized plan, it really is a gateway into the town center, and I think we can do some some great work with that as we've done on the other side of Gravel Lake. But I think even more so, it really is the entrance in to the town center, and it will be fabulous to get it done. So I'm all for it. We'll even buy an extra barbecue sandwich, Jake. Our favorite place if we get this over the the finish line. That'd be great.
I'll hold you to that, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, exactly.
Will it be uplift?
Yeah, it might be uplift. We'll find something to uplift, you know, believe me.
I, I'd echo what others have said, and I I'm in favor of this project being the designee. It, the Nyanza completes the loop. The pavement's degrading. It isn't, it it doesn't score real well in the grant funding process because it's just the way it links between the Gravel Lake arterials. It's got an eighty foot right away, at least for most of it. And I I found out that, you know, it's normal sixty foot right away, but there's an extra twenty because the 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 streetcar used to go down the side. So it's got a lot of elbow room and a very treat area, and I think we could do something really nice with that as part of the entrance and the loop around the lake that a lot of people can enjoy. We'll put a parking lot down at Lakewood. And we'll have to look at what we, what other access there might be. But, you know, you, that that new sidewalk, the wide sidewalk on Gravel Lake between Nyanza and Washington is getting a lot of use and it dead ends. I'm really anxious to see what happens when there's a loop. I think it's going to be a great recreational opportunity for people Lakewood. So any other comments? Thank you. You've made a selection that seems to please the group, so. Back to you, Mr. Caulfield.
No, thank you, Mayor, and we'll move forward with Nyanza and thanks for your patience with us on this. Where we seem to be moving like lightning on 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 a number of fronts. So, but we'll move forward with that. And then, Mayor, if it pleases the Council, I do have some other updates I'd like to share.
Okay, I'd just like to thank, thank Jake for joining us tonight. And I miss you being the setup guy. I've had to deal with members of Congress on my own without being told what I'm supposed to say when I walk in the office. And your, your value was enhanced.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Caulfield?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think you're all aware that Congress approved and the President signed the American Rescue Plan Act last week, one point nine trillion dollar federal relief project. I'm not going to, what I'm going to focus on is the impact on cities because it is far encompassing on where and how the monies can be used. However, sixty five billion of of the one point nine trillion is set aside specifically for cities for direct and flexible aid to the nineteen thousand plus cities, towns and villages in the United States. For Washington State's two hundred and eighty one cities, that equates to one point one billion dollars. And then for Lakewood, it's fourteen point eight six million dollars. As I noted, Congress was very deliberate in that the monies coming to the cities need to be both direct and flexible. And even though the funds are going to flow through the state, the state is directed to distribute those monies to the two hundred and eighty one cities and towns without, you know, taking any portion of the monies or putting any rules or regulations on them or anything along those lines. The federal government has already done that. Congress has already done that. And essentially, they have to be used for COVID nineteen relief. Did want to let you know that we are in the process of preparing a memo that we would like to have as part of your retreat, outlining some additional detail and background information on this, including potentially how the monies could be used. We we do expect to receive half of the funds within the next sixty days. So we'll say by the end of May, that equates to seven point four three million dollars. And then in May of twenty twenty two, we would receive the balance of the additional fifty percent or seven point four three million dollars. Also, the funds have to be, I won't say allocated, but they have to be designated for use by December thirty first of two thousand twenty four. So there's really, it's not like the CARES Act money where we were under the gun to get those monies spent by December thirty, actually sooner than December thirty first. Originally, it was like October thirty first, and then it got bumped out to November and then finally December. So there is time to think this through from a policy standpoint and how to invest these monies. One of the key attributes that Congress did include in their direction is that these monies can be used to backfill for local government revenue losses. And we're in the process of calculating that in the event that the council does wish to backfill revenue losses, particularly in our in our in our general and 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 street fund. And again, we'll we'll have that information for you. Also, last week, the governor, as part of his healthy Washington road roadmap to recovery plan, he did move the state to Phase Three and also a return to a number of spectator events. However, not for activities within parks, not yet. And the reason I bring that up is because we're still on hold or on pause in terms of whether or not we're going to be able to do, for example, Summerfest. We did learn last week that the governor has directed his office to put out further guidelines specific to Phase Three. Myself and the Assistant Police Chief, we attended a webinar earlier today that was put on by the State Department of Health. We were, that was in collaboration with AWC. We were hopeful that maybe it was going to get released then, but it 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 didn't. So hopefully later this week, we'll have some more information on what Phase Three means above and beyond what you've probably already read in the newspaper, which is again focused on spectator events and a number of other private activities like restaurants and gyms and, you know, the list, the list goes on. Also, unlike when we're in Phase Two, which was Also, unlike when we're in Phase Two, which was you know, kind of a statewide, major region approach, this next phase, Phase Three, is going to be transitioning to a much more regional approach at a county level, which means that if we don't maintain our metrics, we could slide back to Phase Two. Now, here's the good news. What we learned today was that the number of COVID-19 cases has dropped significantly from the latter part of 2020 in January and February. However, in March, they have essentially plateaued. That's only, you know, it's through half, half of the month. But they are still, the number of new cases is considerably lower than what it was during fourth quarter of last year. So that's the good news. And that's also the reason why the governor moved moved the state to Phase Phase Three. Also, as it relates to vaccinations, the number of folks that are now eligible for vaccinations has opened up, including essential employees within the city of Lakewood, for example, our our police officers, as well as our elected officials. And so what we are seeing is more and more vaccines are becoming available, and we expect that to continue. What we also learned today is that by they're they're expecting by May 1, so six weeks from now, that generally speaking, everybody will be eligible to get the vaccine. That's that's the projected goal by the State Department of Health. If that whether or not that comes to fruition is really going to be dependent on the number of vaccines that they're able to get from the three major pharmaceutical manufacturers that are that are providing them. So so the proverbial light is at the end of the tunnel to get as many people as possible vaccinated by this summer, so we can get that herd herd immunity and hopefully move beyond this pandemic. As a follow up to our conversation that we just had regarding the the Congressional Community Project Funding Request from Congresswoman Strickland, she also asked, and we were able to meet this deadline today, she also asked for some language as it relates to the National Defense Authorization Act for fiscal year 22. And the council might remember last year, we did submit some proposed language as it relates to the North Clear Zone. And unfortunately, you know, when we were asked, it was just too, the Congress was too far along in the process. So we did recycle that language as well as added some other language. And we submitted that to her office today, and we understand that she is going to submit that through the proper channels so that that language can be included in the fiscal year 22 NDAA. In addition, given some of the continued challenges that we're having with the Army Environmental Command and essentially getting our $5.1 million and already allocated federal funds through a combination of Air Force monies and repi monies, we are in the process of drafting a request for congressional inquiry that the Congresswoman can submit to the Army to get some answers to our questions on why it's taken so long and what's the what's the holdup on this. And we're hoping to have that ready and sent out by the latter part of this week or or early or early next week. So more to more to follow on that. In addition, we also hope to involve our neighboring members of Congress, Congressman Derek Kilmer and Congressman Adam Adam Smith, the latter who is the Chair of the House Armed Services Committee and certainly carries a lot of weight back in Washington DC and and at the Pentagon. I am pleased to announce that the Youth Council did recommend a student Gloria Ruiz for the 2021 AWC Center for Quality Community Scholarship. You know, the our Lakewood students have last for five or six years, I think three or four have actually been been selected, including, I think last year we had a student selected as well. So she's a student at Clover Park High School. There was three applicants that came forward to the Youth Council, and she scored the highest. And so she is being recommended. And so we sent the packet down with a cover letter from Mayor Anderson to AWC last Thursday, which was a day in advance of the deadline, which was which was which was Friday. Just a friendly reminder that on April 17 and 18, the Saturday and Sunday, we're going to have our spring community cleanup over at the transfer station owned and operated by West Waste Connections or LeMay Refuse, as it's been also known as, and Lakewood Refuse. And if you're interested in volunteering on any one of the the mornings and early afternoons, please let myself or the city clerk know, and we'll get you we'll get you signed up for that. The last update that I have for you, and this is as of about 4:30 this afternoon, as part of the the state's budget, and I think it's within the transportation budget, they have the pedestrian and bicycle program as well as the Safe Routes to Schools program for 21 through 23. And one of our projects is on Safe Routes to School is ranked number eight. And so it's it's really close to the top. And so long as that that program gets funded, we're going to get this money. And the project is sidewalk infill on Far West Drive between 112th to Lakewood High School and then down to 91st Street. And the the grant amount that the Public Works Engineering Department submitted for is $1,336,000. And then the city's match is $139,000. If that funding is approved by the state legislature, not our specific project, but rather the big pot of money of which our project is is a part of, we would have access to those monies in 2022, during which we would do the design, and then we would construct in 2023. So we continue to be very, very successful in seeking and acquiring grant funds. And so again, so long as the state legislature moves forward with funding this program, then the city of Lakewood is going to have another project, another sidewalk project funded. And with that, that's my report.
Questions for the city manager? All right, seeing none. Ms. Farmer.
These are random questions, and I don't know if Mr. Bucic is still hanging around, but I did receive a constituent question about the mailboxes still in buckets on the one side of Oakbrook.
So in Onyx, in the Onyx neighborhood, so about 85% or upwards of 90% of the keys have been delivered to the residents personally. In addition, they have also each been given a ribbon. And the purpose of the ribbon is if they want to keep their mailbox, because that's something that they privately own, is to tie it around the mailbox, and our contractor will not pick it up. If there's not, if there's not a ribbon on it, then our contractor will will police it up. For those individuals who have who were who have not received there because they weren't home or didn't answer the door or something, we left them a note and have directed them to go to the post office to get their key for for that community mailbox. I believe that occurred. I believe that occurred late last week or mid last week.
Okay, very cool. I understand. And my last question is, I didn't get a chance to ask Mr. Bucic this, but with the with the CDBG funds for the sidewalks on Phillips, when when might that project start? I don't know if there's a possible ETA.
So we would try, we got to go through the CDBD, CB, CDBG Annual Action Plan. And so presuming we can get that done by April 15, then design would get would get underway later this year and then be constructed, you know, beginning probably this time next year.
Awesome. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Coughfield? And we go to council comments. Ms. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, my quick comments, I'm happy that I've been able to meet with all of the council members. So that has been fabulous. I've got to talk with them and get a really good grasp on things that are happening. And so I appreciate that. And thank you all for your time on that. Some other things I've done, I attended the 25th Anniversary Planning Meeting, and that was fabulous. I'm so excited for all of the things that we're still being able to do even in the midst of the pandemic. So I think that that's great. They're moving forward. And it was my first one. And then Councilmember Moss was so gracious and introduced me to her Rotary Club. So that was very, very nice. I appreciate meeting more people and just getting to know Lakewood even better. And then lastly, I was able to attend the groundbreaking of the with the Home Ownership Center Northwest in the city. And that is just wonderful, the two single-story homes that are on Washington for the affordable housing opportunities. I just think it's fabulous, and it just looks like a very, very cool place. And just all the amenities they're putting into it are very current, very environmentally friendly, and I look forward to seeing more.
Thank you. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This afternoon, I did testify for the Senate Transportation Committee in support of the Rail Safety Bill that is looking to implement some of the recommendations that came from the NTSB study and then the subsequent study by the state legislature to do that. That most of the testimony that the committee received was supportive. So I'm thinking that will at least gets the the increase in the oversight around rail safety projects going forward to include the restart of of the Point Defiance bypass. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farmer.
I don't have anything this week. Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have is I attended the Lake City Neighborhood Association. Mr. Branstadter was also on the call. I think I counted eight people on the call, which I thought was great. After all this time in lockdown, they've been they've been very loyal and continuing on in their neighborhood association. We talked a little bit about the construction projects they had heard from Mr. Bucic the month before. They're looking forward to hearing from him again. So that may be looking at the city manager. I don't know if you need to schedule it right away again in April, but maybe May or something. They want some, they have some follow up questions. And I think they're definitely going to need to hear about this, the the program for Gravely Lake Drive and part of Washington that we approved tonight. I talked a little bit about it, but they're certainly well aware of it. And I think they're interested in hearing from Paul again in the next few months. And then I will just leave it that they are interested. They can't wait. They are looking forward to meeting our two new members. That would include Ms. Farmer, who apparently has not, they they claim has not been at one of their meetings yet. And so and then they can't wait to meet Ms. Bell. So I I wrote that down. They are looking forward to seeing their our two new council members.
They can't, their meetings right after I got on board and, you know, COVID. So I'm excited to meet them, too.
All right, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did, I too attended the 25th Anniversary Planning, and LMCC is planning to participate. We'll have a booth there. We haven't gotten down to the grass next of what we're going to do. But we're looking forward to doing that. The groundbreaking was absolutely wonderful. It felt good to actually be out and meet people in person again. So that was good. And Councilmember Bell, thank you for so much for joining me with Rotary. And I hope that you like what you heard, and you might become one of us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whalen.
It's been a little bit of a busy week. I had a Pierce Transit Orientation this last week, which will lead into a long, lengthy board retreat this coming Thursday, to be followed by the Pierce County Regional Council meeting as well on Thursday. And so more to follow on that. Other than that, it's just full speed ahead.
All right, thanks. On Tuesday, I held coffee with the mayor. Ms. Fear presented on the sub-area plan. And on Wednesday, I attended this State of the County meet presentation, which was actually a live event with limited, very dispersed people in the audience. Followed by, I was in about an hour of the, maybe a little less, on the 25th Anniversary celebration. I kept hearing one recurring theme was bling. So we'll we'll see what goodies to come up with it. You know, we're out of bling since we ended up handing it all out at the reverse parade at Christmas, if you recall, the shortage of prizes at that point. Thursday, I was joined some of you with the at the Home Ownership Center's groundbreaking. That's a great project. I hope to see them do more in Lakewood. And then I have just kind of a brainstorm idea for you and the the COVID, federal COVID funding. And I talked to a couple of you in a non-quorum matter about this. I'm interested in exploring establishing a summer jobs program, Lake Lakewood Youth Corps for disadvantaged kids, 16 to 18, with some of that funding by a couple of anti-supervisor, pay them minimum wage, minimum wage with a spiff, get some cleanup work done. I think Mr. Whalen even suggested there may be a way we can hook them up with a local business where they get mentored. But get some initial job experience in addition to the money, get a reference. And we could probably sustain this with COVID funding, a pretty modest amount of that funding for the three-year period. But I think it would be actually be doing something if you aim at it, you could means test it. One easy means test would be whether you're free and reduced-priced lunch eligible. We we have a minority-majority school district, and we have a high percentage of people on free and reduced-price lunch. And everybody talks about passing resolutions on diversity, equity, inclusion. I think if you give people a handout as opposed to a a COVID handout, which seems to be the the thing today, that that it's it's very valuable. And I kind of prejudice in a way, my personal prejudice, is that I did something like this. I worked Summers Grounds Group for a school district at minimum wage. That was my first time I had to show up every day for an extended period of time, which is probably the key to be at a good employment. So anyway, that's something we can talk about later, but just one of the many ideas for the the funding that's that's coming that might have a lasting impact. Anything else to come before the council?
Hey, Don, it's it's really late, but do you want to talk about the opening of the Crisis Triage Center in Parkland?
Yeah, yeah, yes. I could just mention it that the, you know, Pierce County spearheaded and funded the construction of a crisis center for mental health crises, people in the alternative to jail or the hospital where they can get that 72-hour hold. Police can drop them off, first any first responder could, mental health professionals will be there. It's run by a an entity on contract. But it's out on 112th toward, pretty close to Franklin Pierce High School, if you know where that is. It's conveniently located for folks, whether it be Puyallup, Graham, Lakewood. You don't have to run to downtown Tacoma, but it's another resource for the mental health needs of the county. And from a county's perspective, I guess, hope to have more going down the road. But it provides, I think it's 16-bed facility. But it's, it doesn't have to be a 72-hour hold, but it's somewhere to go when people have a mental health need. And it's I think I wasn't going to make it. So it was a virtual groundbreaking this week.
I I watched it. And, yeah, I don't know exactly when it's up and running, but the Recovery Innovations person was there to speak. So at some point when they're ready to go, I that's that's something that I would hope that we as a city will access that. we as a city will access that facility because it's fairly close by.
I have it on good authority that the Recovery Innovations contract was approved.
Okay. I bet.
Passed over my day job desk.
Yeah.
Anything else? Well, thank you for all you do. We're adjourned.